Please stand for an invocation by Councilwoman Betty Eppsher.
Our Heavenly Father, as we pause, we acknowledge that you are God and beside you there is no another. We come humbly before you and we thank you for this day of life and for the privilege of living it in our city. We're grateful as we come together this evening for the things that will be discussed on our agenda, that we will realize the decisions that we make will affect our city and our residents, not only now, but in the years to come. And we pray that each decision that is made will be made for the good of our citizens and will be pleasing to you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
[applause]
Roll call.
Councilman DeGarris.
Here.
Councilwoman Eppsher.
Here.
Councilman Branum.
Here.
Councilman Tinsley.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Potem Russian.
Yes, here.
Mayor Pearson.
Here.
With seven present.
Disclosure of interest: any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, moving on. Citizens input: each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mike Smith, 2520 Schweitzer. I would like to, member and madam, mayor members of the council, like to invite you to the airport, Papa Bluff Airport, this Saturday from like 7:00 AM to 12:00 noon. We'll be having our annual pancake breakfast. We'll have plane rides, helicopter rides, and I won't be cooking the food, so it'll be good pancakes. So, just wanted to come to you guys and just wish you to come out and, if you haven't been to the airport, come out and visit with us at the airport. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, it's always a very good event out there if nobody's been out there. It's an exciting day.
Sounds like fun. I've never been on an airplane before. I have to go. There's no further comments? We'll move on to the workshop required items. Item A: the City Council will review a request from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve a request to operate a building materials business in a C-2 general commercial district. The applicant is Simo Ready Mix, PO Box 2045, Cape Girardeau, Missouri, for property located at 3123 Cravens Road.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you stated, SRM, Simo Ready Mix, is the owner of this property. It is across Cravens Road from CCX Trucking, and it corners on Cravens Road and the Industrial Park Bypass Road. It is a conditional use to operate a materials processing plant in a C-2 general commercial district. Existing zoning is C-2 general commercial, and the land is vacant. Surrounding land use to the north would be residential, RS-1 and RS-2; to the south would be county; to the east would be industrial; and to the west would be residential, owned by an adjoining property owner who sold this property to the Simo Ready Mix. Land slopes to the south has poor drainage. Will have to be elevated, the site would have to be elevated to put some of the features in that they wish to. Public utilities are available. It's accessed from Cravens Road and the Industrial Park Bypass Road. As a matter of fact, I gave you a drawing, and if you look at that, the 792 feet, I believe, that is the Industrial Park Bypass, and the other side would be the Cravens Road. It's in very small letters where it notes the road names. I had to look twice before I saw it, so that's why I mentioned that for you. Police and fire protection are available. Fire station number three will be the first responder. The Planning Department and the Planning and Zoning Commission does recommend approval of a conditional use permit for a buildings material business with the following stipulation: the conditional use would go with the property owner. If ownership changes, the new owner would need to apply to the Planning and Zoning Commission to continue the building materials use. They have a plant on PP Highway west of town now, and they're going to close that one and put in a new features on this location, upgrade their capabilities to handle the property, or the owner of the Simo Ready Mix is here tonight. If you have specific questions for him, Steve Oberman, from Cape Girardeau area. Any other questions? Thank you.
Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, there's nothing. No one wants to speak. I make a motion we move item A to the voting session, which I believe would be May 19.
My second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to move item A to the council meeting on May 19. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B: the City Council will review a request authorizing the issuance of taxable tax increment financing review notes for the Eight Points Redevelopment Project Series A of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to provide funds to finance redevelopment project costs and approving actions and documents in connection therewith.
Madam Mayor, this is a procedural item that is in our redevelopment agreement. I have both Jeff Otto with Eight Points and Shannon Creighton with Gilmore &amp; Bell here to answer any questions. It's just, as I think everyone's aware, the Eight Points Development is well underway now, and they're just asking that we go ahead and issue these notes to help reimburse the developer. One of the important things, Shannon had a memo in your packets that you received, is that the city is not responsible for any of the interest or principal on these, and I think that's something that's very important that we be aware of. We simply are the mechanism that they issue them through. Shannon, you're Jeff.
I agree. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Shannon, would you be able to come up and just kind of give a rundown for the public and just for the newer council members?
Sure. So, good evening again. My name is Shannon Creighton. I'm an attorney with Gilmore &amp; Bell. We are engaged by the city in your special counsel and bond counsel in connection with the redevelopment of the Eight Points Shopping Center. As many of you are aware, two years ago, the city approved tax increment financing for that shopping center, and at that time entered into a redevelopment agreement with Eight Points Development. Now, that redevelopment agreement, under that agreement, the developer agreed to advance all the costs of redeveloping that area, and then in exchange, the city agreed to issue TIF notes to that developer for an amount up to $35 million to reimburse them for those costs. A TIF note is much like an IOU or promissory note. It's going to be held by the developer, and we call it a special limited obligation because it has a limited source of repayment. The revenues that are generated within that area, incremental revenues, property taxes and sales taxes will be used to pay back that note. The city's general fund, other funds of the city are not at risk. And again, because the developer holds that note, they take the risk that if revenues aren't generated, they're not going to get paid. Now, the notes will expire in 2035, and if they're not paid in full at that time, they will be canceled, and again, the developer cannot look to the city for more payment or for payment. Tonight, in your package, you received an ordinance with a document. I apologize for the length of that document, but lawyers can't write simply. But that ordinance implements the redevelopment agreement. Again, all of the substantive terms of the TIF notes were set forth and previously approved by the city under the redevelopment agreement. This ordinance and the trust indenture simply implements that. The trust indenture does include some other items, record keeping matters, how the notes could be transferred, and other items. So, we do need you, in order to issue those notes, take this action. The memo that was in your council packets does explain the substantive terms of the note, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I make a motion we move item B from the workshop to the voting session that I believe is held tonight.
Second.
A motion and a second to carry item B to the action required items tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item C: the City Council will review ways to revitalize vacant lots in the city limits.
Yes, Madam Mayor, council, you should have a memorandum in front of you, and I apologize that it just got to here this evening, but it's really the first chance I've had to work on it. Continuing the discussion from our last meeting, I just want to go over a few things with you and tell you that we're still working on trying to come up with an ordinance and maybe come up with some different ideas about how to deal with this problem concerning vacant structures. What we currently do is if we find a vacant structure, or in most cases, a structure that is, where it's just gone so far that it's, demolition's required, is that we contact the property owner or make attempts to contact the property owner to abate the nuisance and give the property owner an opportunity to do that. If the owner does not do that, then it usually goes to the Building Standards Board, and the board determines what action to take. And in the cases where there's a demolition, what will happen is the city will pay to have the structure demolished and then put a lien on the property. Then we're faced with the situation of either waiting till the property goes up for tax sale and hope to get our money back then, or actually going to court, seeking a personal judgment against the property owner, and then exercising our lien on the property, try to sell the property to satisfy the lien. As you can imagine, all of those things have their strengths and weaknesses. They all involve the expenditure of money. So, what we're trying to think of is something that we could do maybe in addition to that, and I'm not suggesting that we completely abandon that process, but maybe consider an alternate plan whereby if the city determined that a piece of property might be attractive to a developer, give the property owner an opportunity to deed the property to the city. The city in turn would make the property presentable to a potential developer, and the developer in turn would then sign a promissory note in favor of the city for the amount that the city had in the property, which would be the amount of demolition, and give the developer then an opportunity to develop that property and give him a timeframe, say one year, two years, something like that, to do something to make the property productive to where it would generate tax revenue for the city. It would be a slow way to collect what's owed, but eventually, the city would be able to satisfy the lien. I'm not suggesting that we do this in every case. I think there would have to be some discretion. Probably Dennis and the building inspector would probably need to look at properties and determine which ones might be suitable for this particular program, but it's something that I think that at least would be worth the council's consideration and talking about. In one sense, it sounds like a tax abatement. In another sense, though, it's really not, and I think it's something that's doable. I still am researching it, but it is an idea that I at least wanted to bring to the council's attention, certainly open it up for comments, questions, discussions. It's a work in progress, and we're looking for other ideas as to how we might solve this problem. But that is one idea that I did want to discuss with you tonight.
Mr. Duncan, are you recommending that we table this for a little bit until you're able to come up with something more presentable?
If I may suggest, and it's obviously up to the council, but we'd just like to continue this as a workshop session until we get something put together that we think works with you all. So, we've had it on about three workshops now, and in between, we get together and try to make sure there is a city ordinance that says essentially the City Council shall have no power to abate taxes, assessments, or burdens of any kind. So, we've got to make sure what we bring before you all is something that doesn't, isn't contradictory to what we already have on the books. So, I think as Wally said, we eventually will get that money back, but we just want to make sure. But if the council doesn't mind, we'd like to continue to have, just where we keep it on our front burners, too.
You have to have a motion for that as a directive? To just keep a motion?
You could do a motion for a workshop for the next meeting if you'd like.
To be continued to the next workshop session.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I'll make a motion. We continue it on the workshop session in the next meeting.
My second.
A motion and a second to make, I think it's item, item C, a workshop for the next meeting. Do we have any further comments? Anyone else?
The only thing is, there's a lot of 50-foot lots. Is that going to be a buildable lot?
That's something that, where I think there needs to be some discretion there on the planner's part.
If you don't mind.
Yeah.
It is a buildable lot because it's a lot of record, a lot of history, and those are buildable lots. And the other thing that carries a little bit of value with most of these lots is that they have access to water and sewer and sometimes gas already on the property, so that's, but yes, it is a buildable lot at 50-foot if it's a lot of record.
Yeah. Want to make sure that we might have to work on that if they weren't buildable.
No, no. Since it's a lot of history, if it precedes a certain date, our ordinance provides for that to make it a buildable lot.
Okay. Thank you.
It's important to remember, too, that these lots are costing us money. We're having to maintain them. The formula doesn't have to necessarily be a money-making proposition. Kind of just stop the bleeding, and two, put a nice home on our, to beautify our city and give somebody a home.
Any further comments? Okay. Have a motion and a second to move item C to the workshop next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item D: the City Council will discuss the sale of city property located in the 500 block of Midland Street.
Councilman Russian tabled this to this meeting at our last meeting, and as you all are aware, and I think most of you all had a chance to probably get by and look at the lot and question it directly behind smoking Ace's barbecue, and Mr. McEwen, who's in the audience tonight, has come to us and expressed interest in purchasing that lot. There is a sewer line that goes diagonally kind of across that lot. We would maintain a sewer easement, and Mike has agreed to that, Mr. McEwen. We also had a resident from that area that was looking at possibly purchasing the lot also. I think we have two options. We can either put that in the hands of a realtor, and they can negotiate a best price for us, or we simply have to bid it with sealed bids and accept the highest bid. Or we can choose not to sell the lot. I mean, that again is a council's discretion. Mike, do you want to address the council? I think you had talked to Mr. Angler, I think.
Yes, sir. I have talked with Mr. Angler, and we have agreed that we would both like to purchase the lot, that we've come up with, if we could split the lot up, and it would work out perfect for both of us. We would rather go that way with it. As far as, there's a sewer line that needs to be moved that would, is in the way right now of me adding on eventually, and I would ask before we purchased the lot or whatever that that could be moved. I've agreed to put a fence down the middle, wherever we agree to. We'd have to have it surveyed, of course.
What are lines or sewer line, Mike?
It's a sewer line. It comes to the back edge of the property. In order for me to build on, it will come right to the edge, and I know you guys have to have like a 10-foot easement on each side, so I would, and of course, I would pay for the cost of moving the sewer line. It needs to be moved over about 10-foot, and then Mr. Angler, we both kind of come up with where some property lines would be. Of course, we'd have to get it surveyed off, and that would cost us money. I've been hearing ways that you guys talk about, you know, what to do as far as put it up for a realtor or do this. Here's a case of you guys are just talking about, see, there's an empty lot here that's, if me or Mr. Angler don't get it, there's nothing going to happen. We're giving you guys a chance to, you know, stop the bleeding here with this one as far as, I know he mows it and stuff, but anything happens over there, you guys are, you know, responsible and stuff like that for. We would take all that responsibility away. We understand that we couldn't ever build on the property that, because the sewer is in the way, and we wouldn't ever build on it. Like I said, I would put a fence up. He's happy, I'm happy, and I think that's the best way to go with this deal. We would like to just come up with a price that everybody thinks fair instead of paying a realtor fee, instead of, you know, we understand that we're going to have to have it surveyed off because we're splitting the lot up, and I'm going to have cost of moving the sewer, so I'm going to be pretty deep into this lot already. It's going to further my business. Maybe I can add on another employee or two when I do get added on, and it would generate more money through the city through taxes and stuff like that.
One of the things we've kind of been talking about tonight, yeah, and I think we don't have a lot of options as to how we can dispose of property, so it would either be a bid process or we would have to list it with the realtor. We can certainly do a bid process, and there probably isn't anybody else interested in a lot that is not buildable other than those two property owners.
I could probably talk to my attorney and Mr. Angler's attorney and see if we could just bid on it together and buy it together, and then have, I could talk to a surveyor about splitting it up and all that stuff before we bought it, and if I could get somebody from the city to come down and see if it would be possible to move the sewer line and all that stuff.
One question I'd like to ask: if we have, you know, properties that are purchased, and we determine a fair market value for purchasing something, can we not also sell a piece of property and just use a fair market value for selling? Because the reason I'm asking that, I understand about using a realtor and all, but you know, this is a very basic lot, sits below the water line in most respects to the property around it. So, I mean, you know, I would say I have rental property. To me, I mean, that lot really isn't above $1,500 to $2,000 as far as value as I'd price it as a piece of property for use. So, if you come up, if, you know, if we're not able to by ordinance or some statutes, we can't shoot a price of fair market value to them, just let them split it and be done with it, otherwise, you're going to go through a bid process, and, you know, it kind of goes outside that boundary.
I'm sure we would be more than happy to pay $2,000 for the lot if you guys are happy with that.
I think at least we need to.
And we would incur all the closing costs and stuff like that as far as everything else that went with it.
Would you be paying your parking lot to the fence?
No, sir. The parking lot will stand to where it is now, where the gravel is. The lot that I buy from you, I don't think I can, but it'd just be gravel up to the new fence that I'm going to be putting up in the middle of the property. The property's not going to be split exactly in half. He wants more of the front facing his road so people can't come in, and he can park two RVs there. I need the half towards the back so I can come back in a circle, so actually works out perfect, but it's going to be kind of an angle that they're going to have to survey it off to. And also, we have to leave a, I think it's 10-foot, is that the sewer easement? It has to be.
16 is the smallest we can get by with, but don't even have 20-foot easements.
A 20-foot, okay. So, there has to be a 20-foot easement, and the lot's only 50-foot, so if there's a 20-foot easement in a 50-foot lot, that only gives us 15-foot on each side that we could even do anything with anyway, but.
I'm glad that you came up here, Mr. McEwen, because from my understanding is that you and Mr. Angler had a really hard time trying to agree on this piece of property, and to hear you say that you two have come to an agreement about maybe you could split the property up, I believe that was Mayor Potem Russian's idea, I think.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's a good step forward. I don't know, it sounds like it's going to be a very complicated process, and I don't know that two weeks is enough to figure out. What, is there any comments from the council about how you would like to proceed with this?
Well, again, if we have to go with an appraisal or if we have to go through a realtor, I just don't want, I don't want to open bid. I want the interested parties to have access to the property. You know what I mean? I mean, that's the only people that have interest in it, but, you know, whatever we got to do, we got to do. We had the same problem. We have a person that maintained it, and now we got a person that has interest in it. But basically, the thing is, deriving at a price, they have to get it surveyed, got to get it plotted the way it's going to be, and then they have to get the sewer moved, and when all that's done, basically, you're going to have, you know, your done deal. But whatever way is best for us to derive at the price and that we can do is, you know, I recommend.
One thing I'd like to say about the bidding process or getting it appraised, or whatever you said, going through a realtor, that does open it up, and me and Mr. Angler were talking if any investors that know, that was here at the last meeting, know that I'm interested in the property and he's interested in the property. We're afraid if we have a bid on it, that somebody might try to come and bid, you know, just thinking that we might buy it at a later date, and then nothing's going to get done with the lot besides it just sit there vacant again, and we don't, we do not want that. We'd rather it not sell than somebody just buy it because me or Mr. Angler's trying to work out a deal on it.
I'm a little confused. You can't build on a lot, right?
Yes, sir. We cannot build on a lot.
Then why are you wanting to move the sewer line? I just don't understand.
My lot that I have currently goes to the edge of the property, and what I'm going to build to the edge of the property, it might, we haven't had it surveyed yet, so it might go like five foot over to where I'm going to be building, maybe three foot, but the sewer line runs right beside that, and I couldn't build to the edge of my property with the sewer line being there because I have to have a 20-foot easement if they've ever come and have to dig up the sewer, and I'm, my property, well, they just wouldn't approve me a permit, they wouldn't approve me.
The corner of his expansion is going to catch that, that man.
Can he build to the line down at Dennis?
Say again.
Can he build to the line?
Side?
Yes.
Side property line, yes.
Okay.
On C-2, you can build right up to your side property.
There's some setbacks on some.
Accepting the easement that he spoke about.
Okay. I see now.
While you're up there.
Thank you.
As far as parking, is he required to?
He has to slide a certain amount of parking based upon the square footage of his building.
Am I understanding right? It's like one for 300 square foot or?
It is. 300 square foot of interior space, customer space. Don't include your store room and things like that, but customer space.
And he does meet that.
One parking spot for every 300 square foot. Yes.
Thank you, Dennis.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor, I don't think it has to go through a realtor to address your issue. I do think the city needs to somehow establish a fair market value, whether or not by appraisal or whatever, and as far as probably the safest, best, most fair thing to do, traditionally, we have always, anytime there's been city property that we have not needed or wanted to sell, we've always bid it out. Probably no one else is going to be interested, but certainly, this council has the ability to determine who has the best bid, not necessarily the highest, but also the highest and the best bid. So, I leave that with you, that ultimately, it's your decision as to who the property would be sold to.
I think we can get an appraisal and determine, fairly inexpensively, I think, just on that piece of property and determine a value if that's what the council chooses and just go with appraised value.
I was in the real estate business. I used to work for Redmond Properties. They do drive-by appraisals where they don't do out a lot of the paperwork relatively cheaper than the full appraisal does where they just kind of drive out, and so I think this is what this lot is worth.
I'd be comfortable with that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your guys' time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Send this folks up to the voting session. We have a next one? Yeah. Probably need to have an ordinance.
All right. You make a motion for it? Yeah. I make a motion that we seek for a base appraisal for the property in question.
My second.
Um.
And based on that appraisal, then apply either a bid sale.
Okay. Do we have any motions on the item, item D to move it?
Yes, movement to next workshop session, yes. I make a motion to move the item for voting session, next workshop.
Okay. So, we have, do we have a second?
My second.
Okay. We have two motions. We have a motion and a second to seek an appraisal for We have a motion and a second to seek an appraisal for the property in question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Second motion is to move item D to the voting session at the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Moving on. Item E, the city council will review an amendment to ordinance number 6690 relative to the lease agreement with the Wheatley Historic Preservation Association Incorporated for property located at 915 Garfield Street.
Madam Mayor, this is the Wheatley School, Historic Wheatley School, I think the last segregated school we had in our community. Colin McDonald and Bill Turner in the audience tonight, and they are officers in that organization, and simply want to extend this lease from a, currently a 20-year lease to a 50-year lease. They just want to ensure the integrity of that school, and that they, they do an excellent job of maintaining the property. It is city property, but we have a lease agreement with them, and they maintain it completely for us, and do an excellent job, and I think, if you've been up there, it's, there is a lot of black history that is very important in our community in that area. And they're both here right tonight, if you have any questions.
Madam Mayor, that is a very important piece of history for Papa Bluff. I'm there, drive-by, seems like at least once or twice weekly. It is well-maintained, they do a very good job. Really appreciate how well they keep the property up, and I make a motion that we move this to the voting session of May 19th to approve a 50-year lease.
Second. Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second for item E to go to the voting session of the meeting on May 19th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a question? Are we extending the current lease, which is, I guess has another 10 years on it, to 50, or are we starting from this point and going 50?
My intention and my motion was 50 years from precisely now.
Okay, that's all I need.
Moving on to action required items. Bill number 7683, the city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for used fire trucks. And Councilman Johnson has something that he would like to say on this issue. Do you have, would you like to go ahead and bring that up now?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I've been researching this, and I found out sometimes used fire trucks are what you buy as a used fire truck, difficult problems. I've been searching about lease-purchase plans, and I'd like to hold off on this and let the city fire department search out a lease-purchase plan so we can buy new fire trucks. I know they're expensive, but I've been, I've been through the lease purchasing plan with school buses. It's where you lease a bus, have it, use it for so many years, and then return it. And I know some of the buses we returned, we're glad to get rid of. So, my big issue on this is, are we buying someone else's problems, or are we buying a good fire truck? And I'd like to see us research a lease purchase plan on this for over the years. We could purchase a truck, turn it in in four, five, six years down the road and get another new truck. And we went through the bank financing at the school to do this, so I would, in my, in my research, and I'd like to see this happen.
So, are you motioning to table?
I'm motioning to table this tonight, to find out some more information on it.
Okay.
And not that way, I know we need new fire trucks.
Right.
Because I've talked to the people down there, and they showed me the equipment, where they can't get parts for, you know, and I know they need this, but I'd like to see the city get new fire trucks, and have a plan that we could, ever so many years, we could renew them.
So, we have a motion and a second to table bill number 7683. Are there any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Do we need to do a roll call on that? Or just a voice? Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. Motion carries for bill number 7683 to be tabled until we have a lease purchase, lease-to-purchase agreement to look at on the table. Bill number 7684, the city council will take action on an ordinance vacating an easement between the city of Papa Bluff and Sammy A. and Rita Shawk and Jerry L. and Mary C. Lewis.
Move for first reading of 7684.
Second.
Okay. Motion for first reading and a second for bill number 7684. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7684, an ordinance vacating a utility easement located in section 29, township 25, range 6 east, in the city of Papa Bluff.
Move for second reading, bill number 7684.
Second.
A motion and a second for second reading of bill number 7684. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7684, an ordinance vacating a utility easement located in section 29, township 25, range 6 east, in the city of Papa Bluff.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion for adoption and a second of bill number 7684. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Russian.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
Move seven yes votes.
Moving on, bill number 7685, the city council will take action on an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to operate a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages in a C2 general commercial district for Bob Sutton Real Estate and Loans.
Move for first reading of bill number 7685.
Second.
A motion and a second for first reading of bill number 7685. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7685, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Bob Sutton Real Estate and Loans LLC to permit the use of a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages at 30 Highway 142, Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Move for second reading.
Second.
A motion and a second for second reading of bill number 7685. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7685, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Bob Sutton Real Estate and Loans LLC to permit the use of a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages at 30 Highway 142, Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second for adoption of bill number 7685. Any comments or question? Roll call.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Russian.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
Move seven yes votes.
Moving on, bill number 7686, the city council will take action on an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to operate a drive-through window for the sale of prescription drugs in a C2 commercial district for Harps Food Stores.
Move for first reading of bill number 7686.
Second.
Motion and a second for first reading of bill number 7686. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7686, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Harps Food Stores Incorporated to permit the use of a drive-through window for the sale of prescription drugs at 1301 Shelby Road, Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Move for second reading of 7686.
Second.
Motion and a second for second reading of bill number 7686. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7686, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Harps Food Stores Incorporated to permit the use of a drive-through window for the sale of prescription drugs at 1301 Shelby Road, Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Move for adoption.
Second.
A motion for adoption and a second for bill number 7686. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
Move seven yes votes.
Moving on to bill number 7687, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable tax increment financing revenue notes for Eight Points Redevelopment Project Series A of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to provide funds to finance redevelopment project costs and approving actions and documents in connection therewith.
Move for first reading of 7687.
Second.
Motion and a second for first reading of bill number 7687. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7687, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable tax increment revenue notes, Eight Points Redevelopment Project Series A of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to provide funds to finance redevelopment project costs and approving actions and documents in connection therewith.
Move for second reading, bill number 7687.
Second.
A motion and a second for second reading of bill number 7687. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7687, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable tax increment revenue notes, Eight Points Redevelopment Project Series A of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to provide funds to finance redevelopment project costs and approving actions and documents in connection therewith.
Move for adoption. 7687.
Second.
Motion for adoption and a second of bill number 7687. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
Move seven yes votes.
Moving on to FF, the city council of the city of Papa Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the Open Meetings Law, section 610.021.1 and section 610.021.3.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion, we move to closed session after the city manager's report and a short recess.
A second.
A motion and a second to go to close after the city manager's report.
I don't, I don't have a lot for the council tonight. Mike already told you about the Pancrack Breakfast. We had a very successful, again, buff up the bluff. I think 25 dumpsters in total.